Good evening and welcome to the school committee of May 17th, 2021. Members of the public will have physical access to this meeting. A live broadcast of the meeting is also available via livestream at http/whca.tv/watch/live Hanson and whca.tv/watch/live Whitman and on WHCA's educational access channel 98, edu/98. Would you all please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their about which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Today's first order of business is the reorganization of the school committee 2021-2022. First, I'd like to welcome Michelle Bojola from Hanson as she won the Hanson election on Saturday and congratulate Mr. Small and Mr. Scriven on their reelection bids and wins.
Thank you.
Congratulations. First order of business is to select a chairperson. I'm open to nominations for chair.
Nominate Chris Howard.
Okay. No need to be a second. We have a nomination of Mr. Howard. Mr. Forth?
I nominate Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce. We have a nomination for Mr. Boyce.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any other nominations for chair? The way a chair is selected is by roll call vote and the first and we when we roll call vote, it goes in order of nomination. So we'll do a roll call vote for the nomination of Mr. Howard as chair and I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Ms. Bojola?
Yes.
Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Forth?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
It's 10-0. Seeing that Mr. Boyce was nominated by Mr. Forth, Mr. Forth, do you want to withdraw that nomination or do you want to go forward with a vote?
No, I'll withdraw my nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Forth. Mr. Howard, congratulations.
Oh, gotcha. All right, thank you. We'll keep it moving right along. So again, congratulations, Fred, Chris, Michelle, welcome. And just before we get started, on I think behalf of all of us, a thank you to the citizens of Hanson for supporting the municipal override. So we appreciate that. All right, next order of business is nomination for vice chair.
I want to entertain a motion.
I have a nomination for Mr. Boyce.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations?
A good motion for Chris Scriven for vice president.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Michelle, you got those?
I actually missed who nominated and I think Dawn seconded Boyce nominating. Oh, thank you, David.
You're good? Any other nominations? Okay, so we'll do a roll call for Mr. Boyce first. Mike?
No.
Hillary?
No.
Michelle?
No.
Dawn?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Fred?
No.
Dan?
No.
Steve?
Abstain.
David?
Yes.
I have two yeses. The motion does not carry by majority and I will vote no, sorry.
You voted down? Seven.
So I have two yeses, Michelle?
Seven, two, one?
Yes, seven, two, one. So the motion doesn't carry. We'll move on to the next motion. Mr. Scriven as vice chair. David?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. If I have that as a two, Michelle?
Eight, two.
Okay, if that motion carries, congratulations, Mr. Scriven as vice chair. We'll now move on to secretary. All entertain.
Nominate David as clerk, secretary.
Okay, nomination for David. We have a second.
I'll second that.
A second from Mr. Boyce. Michelle, you got those? Okay.
Nominate for Small.
Nomination for Fred.
I'll second that.
And a second from Mr. Jones. Michelle, you good? All right, I'm gonna go rapid fire. Just holler if we go too fast. All right, we'll so we'll take the motion for David first. Start the side. David?
Abstain.
Steve?
I'm sorry, which one are we doing first?
Uh, we're gonna do David first.
Okay. Uh, yes.
Dan?
No.
Fred?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
And I will abstain. One, two, three, four, five. The motion does not carry, I think, Michelle. I have five yeses. We don't have a majority.
Yeah, five, three, two.
Okay. We'll move on to the next motion for Mr. Small, I believe. Jeff, unless you can help.
Can you, point of order, can you just repeat the count, Michelle, on that, please?
Um, yes. Five yes, three no, two abstentions.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you said three yeses, so I had the numbers backwards. My apologies. Okay.
No problem. Good. All right, so we'll now move on to Mr. Small. Mike?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
David?
No.
And I will vote yes. That's seven. One, one, Michelle? Or I'm sorry.
No, eight, two, zero?
Eight, two, zero.
Eight, two, zero. Yeah, better, thank you. I need a better piece of paper. All right, so that motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Small.
Thank you.
The secretary. Uh, we'll now move to treasurer.
I can nominate Dan Cullody.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other nominations? Okay, roll call vote again. David?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Nine, one, Michelle? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Dan. And I believe the last one is assistant treasurer. Okay, entertain a motion for assistant treasurer.
Nominate Hillary.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Hillary?
Abstain.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Nine, nine, oh, one? All right. That carries. So I believe that takes care of our reorganization. I didn't miss anyone? Okay, great, thank you. All right, so superintendent's report. Jeff, I believe we just need a representative to North River Collaborative for the annual appointment as well as South Shore Education Collaborative and I believe you were.
I am that person.
That person last year, so.
I'll make that motion.
Entertain a motion. I don't see any reason we couldn't vote them together.
Uh, I'll move that we appoint Jeff once again as the representative to both North River Collaborative and South Shore Educational Collaborative.
Second.
Second, Mr. Boyce. We need to do it as two?
No.
We can.
I don't know.
Why not? Why can't we just do it as one?
Okay.
They just need a vote in the committee. I think it's fine.
We wanna be efficient, as much as I love doing roll call votes. All right, so we have approved motion. Any discussion? Everyone's clear? The superintendent, I believe both of these collaboratives, the superintendent is the representative for all districts. Okay, great, roll call vote. David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Great, unanimous. Thank you. All right, subcommittee assignments. So I had thought about this one a little bit and so what I was hoping I could do is have the committee hear me out for a second. And so after kind of watching and listening to our meetings, talking to some other school committees, reflecting on the MASC, do you mind if I pull this down? Reflecting on the MASC workshop, I think one of the things that's missing for us is we really need to identify the two, three, four, five goals that we need to focus on for the upcoming school year and then make sure that everything we do from that point forward aligns to that. So rather than what I clearly distinctly heard in MASC and I talked to some other school committees, what doesn't make sense is we create subcommittees to try and create policy or make determinations for us, rather we all agree on what we need to do and then we build the subcommittees to actually support what we've decided. It's much more effective. We don't have 10 people going in 10 different directions. Everyone has clarity and I think that would work a lot more. And so what I'm hoping we could do is conceptually come together, maybe meet a few times this summer. I need to talk to superintendent and I've been chair like 10 minutes, so I need to sit down with him because we do need the leadership team involved. But what I would be proposing to him is that we spend some time, roll up our sleeves, we meet a few times this summer, we set those goals, now we know what the superintendent's goals are gonna be, he can develop the leadership team's goals, we all know what we're working on and we hit the ground running going forward. So because of that, what I'd like to propose is that at this point, we only focus on the priority subcommittees that need to meet right away. And so I have those as the Whitman Middle School Building Committee, the Warrant Committee and specifically negotiations for fiscal year 2022, so just for the upcoming fiscal year for negotiations for B, C, and D, because we've already approved A. So those are the only subcommittees that I'm aware of that would need to meet between now and June 9th, our next meeting. So I'd like to pause there. That's, that's what I would prefer to do is just focus on those very specific subcommittees and then we'll come together, we'll talk a little bit more. Again, hopefully I have an opportunity to sit down and meet with the superintendent. We'll come back to you in the June meeting and we'll figure out when we can make sure we align these working meetings, we get it done and by the time we hit the ground running and school starts, we're all clear on what we're trying to focus on. So whether those goals, I don't want even, I don't wanna put examples out there because I want everyone to have the autonomy, but it's all the things that we've talked about and all the things that people have, have shown interest in. So is anyone have an issue with that? Yes, Mr. Small?
No issue whatsoever, just two points. Number one, I don't know that the middle school building committee is something that reorganizes or changes. I believe once it's formed, it's formed for the project, A. And then B, I would really love to see us be able to move out tonight or in the very, very near future with a subcommittee that can work in collaboration with the administration as to the educational goals, the costs associated and to try and gain traction within the towns of how those things can be funded, such as full day K, such as foreign languages, et cetera. I really wanna see us be able to have a committee that can work with the towns and try and figure out a way to fund it. And of course, the priorities are up to the administration. They're the ones, you know, to guide us, so to speak.
Okay, so on the first point, Jeff, you'll have to help me, but my understanding is any subcommittee expires at the culmination of every, I mean, this is why we reorganized.
The, the only difference with Whitman Building is that the, the folks that are on this from the committee, that's a standing committee with the town as itself, but I would, in this reorg, have those, recommend that those three gentlemen stay on that building committee as.
And I think we can do that, but I think just to follow, I mean, every subcommittee lasts for basically.
A year.
Until next, one year. So we're not doing indefinite appointments. All those positions that we just voted on, they're good until we sit here about a year from now, so. But other thoughts, so, okay, so let's, let's leave the Whitman Building School Committee aside, but other thoughts in terms of what I was proposing for subcommittees and what Mr. Small's thought was. Chris?
I just, could we just at least touch, oh, yeah, you did recognize the warrant committee as.
Yeah.
Yep. That was my only concern.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Boyce.
Um, I can agree with Mr. Small for the funding traction and we know, Mr. Small mentioned with our last committee, the importance of getting this off the ground and getting it going. So if we do have, when you do meet with the superintendent and we can etch out some things, you know, as we're going down the line, it's coming back up, leadership, superintendent and then the school committee, us, I think that would give us more ample time in between so that we have, we have that positive traction for, for getting funding going. Even if it's the dog days of August, you know, we can be talking about new freezes or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just throwing it out there.
Yep, and I think, you know, Fred, as I did spend some time thinking about this, since I first got on the school committee and I was sitting where Michelle was or is right now, right, very first meeting, all I've heard is we need a budget subcommittee. I've heard that from, it's come up every meeting and every year. And I think the problem is if I say, hey, we're gonna have a budget subcommittee and we're gonna put two people on it or three people on it, I'm not sure every hand in this room isn't gonna wanna participate in what you just described, right? Identifying the objectives that we wanna focus on and then finding the funding, because we all know funding, there's, there's not an unlimited supply of funding, right? And so that's, that's really what I'm thinking. If you just bear with me a little bit, I think we can start to talk about that in the June meeting. I want, my goal, what I'd like to do is have everyone in this room have the opportunity to participate along with the leadership team on what are the things that we really wanna make sure the district focuses on. Yes?
And what I'd like to see is the school committee as a whole come out with a clear, articulate plan of what we need.
Got it.
A couple of members, because all of us sitting in a meeting with, you know, a town, you know, the two town administrators, perhaps they want a FinCom rep, perhaps they want a selectmen. In other words, a more streamlined of this is what we're looking for, this is the associated cost, let's talk about how it can be paid for, then those few people along with administration come back, report to the whole committee and we work in conjunction.
So we're, so Fred, we're going in, so now we're speaking the same language? That's exactly what I'm proposing?
Yeah, that's, that's my mindset. That's what I envisioned.
But we gotta get on the same page first, because as soon as we say, hey, you know, we're gonna focus on A or B, whatever that is, we, we all gotta make sure we agree that we're really only focusing on A or B. We're gonna have to come up with whether it's two, three, or five, hard, so, okay, so let's, everyone's reasonably okay? Yes? Thank you. All right, so let's press on. So then I believe the only subcommittee.
Chris, one moment, sorry.
Sorry, Dawn, go ahead.
So to back up, the next meeting is June 9th.
Yes.
So the plan is that we come to that meeting?
No, no, no. So I think the, again, I've had.
No, but you said we're gonna come collectively talk about the goals and that's gonna be on June 9th?
No, not June 9th. So what I think I'd like to do is sit down with the superintendent and see if we can maybe carve out some planning sessions that would occur over the summer, right? We just need some planning sessions with this whole group and the administration. So that won't happen June 9th. What I'd like to be able to do is maybe try and figure out if we can socialize some dates. I know people are traveling.
Okay.
Maybe even able to use like a doodle poll sometime before then so we can kind of hit the ground running and find some dates where everyone's available and make sure that when we come to those meetings, everyone has an opportunity to participate. So let, we won't get there by June 9th, so I appreciate your clarifying.
Okay, because certainly the will of the committee and one voice, as another member is saying, but we all have constituents who want us to speak for them.
Absolutely.
They come to us, so I'd like to have an opportunity that we all can share what we're hearing from the community as well. And while that may not, at the end of the day, be the collective voice that we move forward for the FY '23 budget, it's an opportunity to share.
That's exactly what I'm advocating for. Everyone should have the opportunities. We all know what that is and we make informed decisions, because as soon as we say, hey, we're gonna go start chasing A, well, we've kind of maybe excluded B, C, D, so, great.
And one follow-up. Do you feel or does superintendent feel that throughout the summer, the facility subcommittee might be necessary, different from the Whitman Middle School Building?
So I think we can, yeah, we might, I think we can hold on the subcommittee. What I'd like to do is come back on June 9th if the superintendent's okay with it. Let's kind of come up with a plan, come up with dates. At that point, we may have to populate some of these subcommittees as we go. So if there's a need, we can do it, but I don't think there's a need for facility subcommittee to meet between now and June 9th.
Right. But I thought, you know.
Just the three that we have right now.
And that's more, the facilities is more reactionary and then planning for the town warrant, although with the technology challenges that we have, we'll need to be able to present by October 1st, at least to Whitman, a, a plan, so to speak, of what we'll be looking for capital items for the following year. So not June 9th, but June 10th then?
No. What I'm trying to do is I wanna create transparency so that everyone has the opportunity to understand, participate, and we can get some stuff done. That's what I'm looking to make sure. Dawn, yes?
And as far as participation on the committees, would we, as a committee, decide, you know, every committee should have three members or four members and just for Michelle's information, it's really a volunteer, you know, no one's gonna say, Michelle, you're gonna sit here, right? I'm sorry if I'm speaking, but that's how it typically is. You raise your hand, you volunteer.
Yeah, so what my, my goal would be for us to all collaborate on that, but again, it's gonna be really hard for Michelle to say, I wanna do this subcommittee when she doesn't know what the other ones are and she doesn't know what our goals are.
Right.
So again, I think we gotta kind of work through that process. My goal is to collaborate and be transparent. If you're listening to what I'm saying, the whole reason I'm saying I'd like for all of us to get together is to avoid some of perhaps the, you're doing this, I'm doing this, he's doing this. We're not accomplishing what we need to accomplish. So that's really where I wanna go. In terms of size of the subcommittees, we can get there, but I think, let's see how many we have, right? If we have three subcommittees, well, there's 10 of us, that's probably about three per subcommittee and we all participate. If we have 30 subcommittees, I'm not advocating that, but okay, well, we might need a couple less people on some of the subcommittees, so just bear with me a little bit. Let me have an opportunity to talk to superintendent. It seems okay so far, but I do wanna kind of, this isn't just about the school committee. For this to work, we need the district's leadership team to participate, engage as well, so we gotta all be on the same boat. So for tonight, then, the Whitman Middle School Building Committee, I believe, is one that we should, what I'd like to do is appoint. It is a very structured process and it is a major undertaking. So to the three folks that are on it, which are, I believe, Fred, Dan, and Chris, these are the notes I took, so I could have this wrong, I would say to the three of you, you know, that is gonna be a significant amount of work. We are building, we're trying to build a building here. So I'd like to appoint the three of you to that subcommittee for continuity purposes, but I also want you to recognize that, again, if we only end up with three or four or five subcommittees, I wanna give everyone the opportunity to participate, so that may limit some of your participation in some of the other ones. So I'm just throwing that out there before I do that appointment. Are you all good staying on? Fred?
Yeah.
Dan?
I'm done, too.
Chris?
Yep.
All right, so I think the chair appoints, at least as far as I know, so consider, consider yourselves appointed. Thank you. Warrants, subcommittee, so as part of, I believe, what we did for COVID, we gave the chair the authority to sign warrants. I'm fine doing that until we go through this establishment of subcommittees, unless the committee feels otherwise. If you feel you wanna sign warrants, then we can take that on. Otherwise, I believe that was a policy decision and the policy decisions weren't, it wasn't tied to Bob, it was tied to the role. That's a policy, policy decision. So I am completely fine with us not doing anything to form a warrant subcommittee at this time unless the committee would like to form one, in which case we can have, we can have some friends join. So I will leave that to the pleasure of the committee. If we do nothing, I'll continue to do them. If we wanna build a subcommittee, happy to do that, too.
I'll make the motion that the chair continues to sign the warrants, providing they're thoroughly ready.
Second.
Fair enough. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We do not need to do a roll call vote. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No one abstaining? unanimous, thank you. And don't worry, I'm not gonna do that by myself for very long. Again, I'm just trying to keep us moving, so we'll have, we'll have some, we'll have some people join in the party. I see you, Dawn. Raise your hand, I saw that.
No, I was.
And so the last order of business in terms of subcommittee assignments is negotiations for B, C, and D. What I want to do, again, in the spirit of trying to make sure we organize ourselves a little bit more, is do a subcommittee negotiations for units B, C, and D, just for the upcoming school year. We know we have to do a brand-new three-year contract, that's not what I'm talking about. That'll start in October. Again, let's, let's kind of get ourselves situated, understand what we need to do. So this would strictly be, um, I would be looking for, I think the way we've done this in the past, a lot of the work that's been done for unit A kind of sets the tone for what we're going to do going forward. So ultimately, what I'd love, if you folks would support it, would be one representative, I'd be looking for volunteers to do B, a representative to do C, and a representative to do D. Again, we're just looking to do, uh, the negotiations for this, uh, for the upcoming year. Volunteers. See Fred volunteering, anyone else volunteering? Mike? Anyone else? Dan?
I did B and C, well, I'm sorry, I didn't do B, I did C and D myself.
Okay.
Last time.
I know, but again, I want to be inclusive, I'm, I'm trying to be inclusive. So I want to give everyone an op, everyone that wants an opportunity on this committee has got to have a chance to participate. So right now I got Fred, Dan, and Mike. Anyone else? Okay, well, since we have three spots and there's three of you, anyone have a preference? Otherwise, we're going to just do it. Any preference?
I think.
Or have a reason?
I'm pretty sure under the confines of the extension that we did, it'll be family, fairly limited, it should be pretty easy.
All right, so then why don't we go B for Mike, C for Dan, D for Fred. Michelle, you good? Excellent. Okay.
And those aren't your grades.
No, I mean, based upon Fred's last motion, those all better be As in terms of effectiveness. All right, um, the only other two items I believe we have are legislative representative. So again, I thought about this one a little bit, um, and I will, I will defer to the spirit of the committee. I do not believe we need an individual legislative representative. I think every person on this committee is a legislative representative. I think that's part of our role, I think that's part of our job, I think that's something that we all should be doing, we're all going to do. So to me, I don't think we need a legislative representative. All I would ask is if there's something that you want to talk about, let me know, we can put it on the agenda. If there's a collective action we need to take, we're going to do what we've done, which is, we all write the letter, we all sign the letter, we all motion move the letter. So, that's what I would prefer to do, unless there's a strong outcry to the contrary, that we need to have legislative representatives.
Mr. Chair, just as long as we keep pace with what is going on, I know there can be long periods of time that things aren't going on, but I always think the communication with our representatives is key, even if it's someone on a monthly basis, even if it gets rotated, there's ten of us, there's ten months before another budget comes up, comes around or whatever. You know, it's, it's something like that.
Sure, I'm open.
Let's just say an, an example of, of equal, um, being equitable and equal across the board, but, you know, I, I would not want them to think we don't have one and, and lose that kind of ability that, that someone that's going to contact them. Someone needs to do something, and it can be a, like I said, a rotation or whatever.
Okay, that's an idea. Chris?
Well, I, I was going to say what you had already said about how, uh, you know, it, I like the idea of us speaking with solid out, solidarity, when we converse with our legislators. But, you know, again, I, I think some of us, um, have some skills to offer in certain areas more than others, you know? But, that being said, I, I'm intrigued by the idea of rotating, Steve. I, I think that, you know, maybe give us, some of us an opportunity to get some experience in that, in that way, you know? Sure. So.
I just, uh, you know, I feel that some of us have some very strong relationships, and it helps. Like, for instance, when Cutler put in the fifty thousand dollars, I get a, uh, him and Ali had done fifty thousand dollar amendment on the budget, I get a phone call the next morning from Cole from Cutler's office. Just to give you a heads up, here's the amendment number, and actually, he ended up emailing it over to me. You know, it's those types of relationships, you know, that you do foster over the years, so that when you do need a favor, if you want to try for an earmark or et cetera, I mean, I know they're always looking out for us, but sometimes you just remind them that we're there.
Sorry, Mike?
Uh, to, to Steve's point, um, I agree, Steve. As, as much as we all should be speaking for everyone, I mean, this should go right to who we elected and we hired as our superintendent. Like, uh, yes, we should all reach out, we should always be pushing our legislation, but that's, goes directly to our superintendent. We're not, we're not the ones that report that, we're not the ones that, so, uh, as Fred said, it's great, we should all reach out individually, and we should all push for it, but, uh, inevitably, it's the superintendent that this should be reported to and, and come back to. So I agree, Chris, I, I like the way you're saying it.
I just had a question. In your research or communication with other school committees, is this a position that you found that other school committees had?
So I didn't do a lot of research on that, I did some committee, uh, discussions. Um, so I don't know. Again, I think, oh, Jeff.
So I was just going to say, I'm, I have a, a South Shore Superintendent's Group tomorrow, and I, that's a question I can ask.
Yeah.
Very much in the.
I mean, I think, I think that's something to keep in mind, if it's, uh, something that, because we have people who have relationships that has fostered from what we have as a committee, that's something different than if it is actually in need, you know?
Yeah, again, my ultimate concern is not, um, the intent, it's the outcome. And I think what my concern is, again, if I'm calling someone and asking for this, is it something that we agreed upon as a committee, or is it something that I want done, right? And so that, I, I, I'm trying to make sure that we align, everything we do comes back to what we agree to as a committee, and that we're all making sure that we're on the same page. You know, Fred, to your point, I mean, I'd be happy to, we could collectively draft a letter and say, hey, this year we're not going to have a legislative representative. If they have anything, they, they have a standing invite, they are welcome to any meeting to share anything they'd like. If there's something that we want to pursue in terms of an earmark or an initiative, you know, again, maybe whether it's coming from the superintendent, it's coming from the committee, um, it's something that we could, I think, look at that way. I just, I want to make sure that we're acting as a committee, and it's not just, you know.
For instance, like, I'll give an example, uh, had the idea with the Duval roof, that perhaps we could get an earmark. Ran it by the chair, sounds good to me, talked to Jeff, ran it by Jeff, brought, uh, Allison Sullivan, her aide, uh, Brady's office in. We sat upstairs, they outlined what they thought they could or couldn't do, and pre-COVID, of course. And, uh, you know, then we had, we discussed it at our meeting. You know, so it wasn't anything done, you know, by one person or one viewpoint, but it was something to try and better the committee or better the district.
Do we get, so, do we get a new roof?
Uh, actually, the bill's in there again.
Yeah, so I, that's kind of.
Probably is not going to get done.
I can think I, why I kind of keep to what Chris is saying, because that's ridiculous, let's, yeah.
I'm sorry.
So I, I guess I would say, based on just what you just described, Fred, um, I, I think that's not exactly in the spirit of what we're trying to do. I think we're trying to come together as a committee and identify things we want to work on together. And, and, and maybe in the past, it's been done differently, but I, you know, I agree with Chris i- in terms of, uh, trying to make this more inclusive, we should always try to speak with one voice. And if there's a process that gets us away from that, then I think we should look at it, and, and, you know, strive to do everything together.
I'm confused, because you said you wanted the superintendent to be the one to speak, the idea was fostered, it was brought to the chair's attention, it's brought to the superintendent's attention, and then it was brought through to see if it was even a possible reality, and then it was brought to the whole committee. You know, there was nothing.
Right, right, so I think. Yeah, so I think ultimately, Fred, the, the problem becomes, there's political capital that's being utilized, right? And so that request for the Duval roof that's going could come at the cost of something else. And so by the time it's coming to the committee, that, that political capital's already been exhausted. The request has been made, it's been looked at, I think our representatives do a great job, but I think they can only help us so many times with so many different things. So my point is, what I'm trying to do is make sure that as a committee, we agree, what are those things? Not, well, it's already done, it's happened, yes, are we, I mean, who's going to say no to free money? Well, we're going to, we're all saying, take it, but at that, but it's kind of too late at that point. So, um, to me, again, let's, let's let the superintendent survey some other districts. I would caution us that, you know, we need to be Whitman Hansen, we don't need to be anyone else, so data is helpful. Um, when I'm looking at subcommittees, I'm taking that as a data point, but that doesn't mean just because someone else does it, we need to do it. So Jeff can certainly look into that, and then we can come back and make a determination at our next meeting. We can add that to the agenda and make a determination, whether it's going to be, um, what Mr. Boyce proposed, and we're just going to rotate everyone through, or we're going to send something and just give them an open invite, or we want to do something differently, we can certainly make a, a, an informed decision at that next meeting.
One thing perhaps had, and, uh, I blame myself for not mentioning it, uh, the town administrator for Whitman was within that loop, and was in, present at that meeting, and the ask, that ask was actually from the town of Whitman, not from the Whitman Hansen Regional School District.
Yeah.
So, they, they're the ones that own the building. So that's where the political capital was going from, so to speak.
Okay. We're good with that one for now? Um, and then I believe, last but not least, we have our Pilgrim Area Collaborative Representative. Anyone looking to volunteer for that? I'm looking at you.
How come everyone's looking at Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Boyce is volunteering. Is there anyone else that would like to volunteer? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So move to the name Mr. Boyce's.
Second.
Pilgrim Area Collaborative Representative.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Great, congratulations, Steve, and thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Another close race, thank you.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Last year, I offered to be the alternate for Mr. Boyce. I don't need to be this year, but if Mr. Boyce would like to ask for an alternate.
Anyone like to make that motion?
So move.
Okay, so the motion is to have Ms. Byers as the alternate to Mr. Boyce, and it was seconded by Mr. Boyce. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No abstentions, great.
Gave me title of secretary this past year, and I almost forgot about that.
Um, and I think before, before we adjourn, again, I just put a couple notes here, things that I just want to make sure we're all aware of. Um, I talked about the Hansen, uh, events, I believe if I have it correct, Wednesday, June second is the Whitman Town Meeting. So again, we'd be looking for hopefully the continued support from the Whitman community. Uh, we have the high school scholarship night on June second, the community evening school commencement at six PM on June third, and graduation on Friday, June fourth at six PM. Hopefully, you've all RSVP'd to Michelle, um, if you haven't, she will chase you down. You're all set with, uh, RSVPs for graduation.
There's a couple people still up, but.
Okay. Okay, so those that have time, great, but don't, don't make her chase you down, don't make her chase you down, please. Please get back to Michelle on those. Great, or, or Shalawn. And our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June ninth at six PM, here.
And the superintendent's eval was due.
The superintendent's eval is due, I didn't jot it down.
June fourth.[1734.21]